All right, thank you for coming. We're gonna start off with a public hearing on the Cold War Veterans Exemption. We discussed it at the last meeting. Anybody have any questions or statements you want to make about it? They know who I am. All right. We're still really getting started.
They can't take any names.
Okay, we don't have any questions or comments on that. Let's move on to the regular session. You should all have minutes of, actually, you should have two sets of minutes. One from the special meeting and one from the last meeting. I'm sure you've all had a chance to review them. So I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda are the bills. Mr. Treasurer, are there any additions or deletions?
No, there is not.
Okay. You've all had a chance to review those. I'm sure they've been in your box for a while. So I would like a motion to pay the bills as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
It's okay to wait. Before I, I'm remiss, I'd like to welcome our new village administrator, Mr. Steve Peters. I'm sure he speaks for the board, myself, saying, "I'm glad to have you." And we're gonna use you like a rented tool. That's the plan.
I heard rented mule?
There you go. Right in the same ballpark. Welcome.
It's just a ladder here.
Yeah. Good to be here. Okay. The next item, if you remember, we put an appetite for bids for the Crown Vic. I mean, you can see we received four bids. The last one, the highest one, from Person in Ohio. Now, before we proceed with this, I just wanted to tell you the situation I'm in right now with the water plant's vehicle. The Durango has been out of commission now for three weeks. It's something to do with the alarm system. It won't reset, so the car won't start. It's 17 years old. The water plant needs to have a vehicle. I talked to the Director of the Health Department. He said, "Well, every water treatment plant in Platte County has at least one vehicle." So these guys have to, you know what they have to do. I'm not gonna beat the dead horse and point all the mandatory testing they have to do each day. There's three each day. And they have to, you know, at times, calibrate the chlorine, check the accuracy of the gauges. But it's a public health issue. We need to have a car. So we have, this Crown Vic has 36,000 miles on it. And we're gonna have to buy some new vehicles. Our wastewater treatment plant truck, the, our mechanic had to weld the new floor in it because it rusted out. Feet were going through the floor. Our public works super large truck is starting to get eaten up by, well, that's eight years old. But we have a 17-year-old Durango and 15-year-old pickup that our mechanic uses. So you, is there any, the highest bid we have here is gonna net us about $2,100. If we spent $1,000 decommissioning this vehicle. This is a good vehicle, and it would not cost anybody anything to put it in service. I, you know, I don't know how much it's gonna cost to fix the Durango. I expect a call from our mechanic tomorrow. I talked to him today. He's been working on a water plant project, so he hasn't really gotten to it very much. But he spoke to a dealer, and they said, "Yeah, we can fix it. Just bring it down here." So I couldn't imagine how much that would cost. Is there any, any of you that have any inkling about using this vehicle rather than selling it for a net $2,000 here?
If we can, if we can put this on the books, can we get rid of the Durango?
Yeah, I, the Durango, I want plenty more money for it.
Right, exactly. I mean, for the little bit of money we're gonna get. I mean, if we're, if we're gonna swap vehicles, why pay $10,000, $15,000 for a new vehicle when we've got?
I think we oughta get rid of the truck that Johnny Benard drives. Get rid of the truck, or the Durango. Get rid of them too anyhow. At least them two. And, and the police car. I think we oughta get rid of them all, myself. I don't know.
Well, how, what are you gonna give them? What are you gonna give the water treatment plant?
They have to get up to the tower.
Well, I have an idea. Right now, we have three good vehicles, plus the electric department has their own truck. Okay, not a truck. We have one in the sewer plant that's seven years old.
Two daily to go to Plasberg. Every day.
Why does he go to Plasberg?
Every day he brings a sample. Every day.
Okay. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta, truck and, this is something new. But you got a seven-year-old truck in the sewer plant. You got Brian's truck, as they were bought at the same time. And you got the hybrid. And I think what we should do is we should look into, in about a month or two, buying a new truck for the superintendent.
We don't have one of those yet. We have a public works supervisor.
Well, whatever he is. You know what I'm talking about. That frees up a truck. That gives us three trucks and a hybrid. And the one truck can be shared, his old truck, I presume, would be shared by the garage mechanic and water plant. The sewer plant truck can be shared by the rec center when they, the very few times when they need a truck, which is to pick up the garbage in the summertime and a couple other things.
This is every day. They pick it up every day.
In the summertime, it's an hour's worth of work.
But they pick it up every day.
I know, but it's not worth buying a vehicle.
No, I don't think they need a vehicle. We're talking about the water plant. It's a public health issue.
I'm talking about a whole thing here. The whole overall view of how we utilize the vehicles that we have. I think the Durango ought to be accessed immediately before we put any more money into it. It's shot. It's been worn out, and I question why it was worn out. It's old, and we got it for nothing in the first place, even though we put $10,000 in it. It's junk.
But why are we gonna give away a white car for nothing?
We're not giving away for nothing. First place, I'd like to see the stipulation that we can't get the $800 for decommissioning a police car when we decommission the police department. I don't know why that isn't reimbursable, because that equipment had to be removed from that car, no matter what we get with it.
At, at the top, we're gonna get $3,100.
So what?
Exactly. We have a vehicle that we can put in service.
So you're proposing that we sell this car for $3,100 and buy a $20,000 or $30,000 vehicle a couple months down the road?
I think we should, first off, we could buy a more appropriate vehicle. Secondly, I think we can get it for about $20,000, maybe less. And I also believe that if we need another car, we, we never had vehicles before like we've got now. What happened, what started this whole thing was when they got some free used vehicles from the airbase and scattered them around the village. And then all of a sudden, every department had to have their own car, where they never had one before. And a couple of years later, these old worn-out cars that they got from the airbase, "Oh, look at our car's 15 years old. It's 17 years old. We need a new one." And all of a sudden, the board started giving them cars.
But you also have to realize, Tom, that we're in 2017. We have a lot more regulations now. Like you said, the sewer plant has to go down to Plasberg every day. The water plant has to go up and check the tower every day.
They're not gonna have to.
Sewer plant don't go to Plasberg every day. Sewer plant goes every Tuesday, or Wednesday. Once a week.
They go down there every day.
They shouldn't be. I don't think.
Okay, the point is, when you had the water tower, when you were mayor, there was no chlorine out of it. There was nothing out of it. It was a water tower.
When we put the Skidney.
It's a lot different.
When we put it in, in two weeks, we're not gonna have anybody going in.
You still have to calibrate it. You still have to check on it. You can't just leave it there. I mean, the recommendation of the Health Department is that we have something for the people to utilize to get there. We've got a vehicle that they can use. It won't cost us any. It won't cost us $20,000. We've got it.
They're gonna ruin it.
I didn't, I didn't get this verified, but Mr. Genalville told me today that he's got $15,000 in the vehicle count. You know anything about that, Ericson?
There's, yeah, it's a reserve account.
So he's got, he's got money for a vehicle. $15,000 already in there?
Aye. I believe that's what it is. Thank you.
You can't buy a vehicle for $15,000. We're gonna have to come up with more.
You can buy another small pickup for $15,000.
Or a small car.
We have one without having to pay for it.
Okay, great. I understand what everybody's saying. Okay, you're okay with him spending $15,000 to buy a new truck?
Well, I'm not really, no, I'm not really in favor.
So why don't we keep the car?
I'm going to record this. I'm not in favor of the water plant even having a vehicle. I think they can borrow one occasionally. They can continue using the hybrid if they want to until things are resolved down there. There's gonna be some big changes around here coming up when the, when the water plant's complete. We gotta take, we gotta look at the overall picture here, and it's short-sighted due to this nickel-and-dime stuff. Now, we'll take a car, you give them that car, that's a, what year is that? '09 or something?
About 36,000 miles.
It's 39,000, but it's still, it's low mileage. But you'll never get that out of it. It'll rust in half, it'll break, like all the other ones that we've had.
And then, and then we've only lost $3,000.
We've only spent $3,000.
Well, no.
We're using it.
No. If we, if we get $3,000 for it, if we get rid of it, I mean, that's what we're gonna, so if we run it till it dies, we're only losing $3,000 that we would get right now. And we're gonna get probably two or three years back.
Here's, never works that way, Dale. It's the 3,000 turns into 9,000 or 10,000. Because you've got maintenance, you've got things that break on it, that are expensive It's just too bad. You know, we set up these things on depreciation schedules and everything, get rid of them. Instead of getting rid of them, when we planned it, it was gonna have its maximum value and its least amount of cost to run it. And then somebody else takes it, like that truck that they've got down in the garage there from the electric department. That was worth $78,000 when they got it. They just basically run it in so it's worth $300 or $400 now. And what did we get out of it? Somebody who never had a car before that didn't need one and doesn't need one now got a truck. All those, all those parts dealers will deliver on-site to any garage.
How many times do you think that the mechanic drove down and worked on that water plant?
It's a special project. There's half a dozen.
How many times do you think he did?
A lot.
Yeah.
A one-time deal. A one-time deal.
It happened, he does all of this in all the special projects. That's what he does. I mean, it's a fact. So it's not like he doesn't need a car. We're gonna continue to use them for these things. Fine, if you're just gonna say, "Stay in the garage and change oil," that's, then that's...
Or take one of the other trucks parked behind the garage and drive down and do something.
Like a dump truck?
Yeah.
Really?
And would drive a mile down the street to the, to the water plant or the sewer plant? Yeah. Or would you need something else?
Okay.
So we have three vehicles right now extra that we're all, I think we should get rid of all of them and not have them anymore. And split up the ones we have, maybe add one more new one to the mix. So we have four new cars divided up among four or five departments.
All right, so the board is of the opinion that the water plant doesn't need a vehicle. Is that correct?
That's my view.
I'm not speaking for anybody else. Is that your, Mr. Arno? You don't think the water plant needs a vehicle?
Yes, I think so.
You think they need one or don't they?
They do need one. They need something. Either they're using their own personal vehicle or something or whatever.
But they're gonna have to pay a mileage if they agree to it. I mean, they're on, they're on the shift, you know? I mean, so. You think they need a vehicle?
Yes.
You think they need a vehicle?
They need something.
Okay.
Is, the problem I've got with the Crown Vic is, it's a, it's a car. They can use these things for trucks and, you know? Need a truck, they don't need a car. That's the problem.
They haven't had a truck. They've had a Durango, and they've got the...
Well, they had, they had a little pickup before that.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, most recently, it's been, you know, I mean, at the very least, you know, we, we need to make sure that something's available. The escape, you know, we have people that are starting to go travel. They ask if they can use it. If it's dedicated to the, to the water plant, you can't use it. Then we'll be paying, we pay a mileage to everybody for every truck. It's a little more expensive. In the interest of saving money, I don't see why we can't give them this vehicle to use around itself for $3,100.
Well, I make a motion that we reject the bid and keep the Crown Vic for the water plant.
Okay. Do you want anybody to second that? It doesn't require a second, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Arno, yes or no on that?
Aye.
That's too bad.
No. Aye. No.
Okay, it's a tie. Quayble, aye. So let's carry the, reject the bid and assign the Crown Vic to the water plant. Okay.
Yeah, we're going to get rid of the Durango.
Yeah.
Not spend any more money on it?
No. Okay, we have, the next item is New York Power Authority revised contract demand. We received a letter indicating that we're revising the current municipal hydro allocation levels through the review of unutilized industrial economic development program allocations. And they listed a whole bunch of them, all of the people that are in the AU. Rousas Point, firm demand was 13,774 kilowatts. Bid demand, 70 kilowatts. So our total contract demand's been from 13,774 to 13,844. It's a, what is that? A hundred, it's 70, 70 kilowatt increase. So at least we didn't go down, so we're intending or...
I didn't understand what this meant here. Are we doing 70 more hydro?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah. I've seen it cut down.
Doesn't make any sense, but it's good.
I'm not gonna question there.
Well, I mean, I was reading this, and it says, you know, I, I thought we got an allocation because of the industrial plant, and that when we lost the industrial plant, we were gonna lose it.
Yeah. Well, it has been cut down over the last couple of years. It has, but now they're, this is basically maintaining it now. 70 kilowatts. It's not, not like we're getting two more megawatts from the unit.
Well, but their usage is going down, so maybe the percentage of what the rest of us pay is gonna go to the last...
It's all based on, as it was explained to me, is these, you know, if we had peaks in, in energy consumption, we're staying pretty close with air conditioning in the summer and heating in the winter. A lot of people questioned before about why we have a more ton of electric boiler. I didn't understand it. And Mr. Puck explained to me, well, we all knew they drew a lot of energy, but we thought, well, if we draw more energy, we'll keep my thing. Well, actually, it spikes it, and when you spike it, then you're going into supplemental in the cost. So we're trying to keep it even now, and that way, that doesn't raise the rates of residents in order to... We had some interest in a server farm coming in here. They wanted to use like 15 kilowatts. We would be in supplemental all the time for the sake of three employees, you know, with, I don't know how many thousands of computers or storage in the channel, so that's just not a, a good thing to, to have. So we're gonna keep a pretty close eye on it, and I picked Mr. Puck, he very incredibly about this, and so there's not much left in it, but he's been able to, you know, send that, give me some idea on that, and I think we're in, we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, at least we're losing ground.
Yeah. Okay. So that's what that... The CP Rail Holiday Train, 2017 CP Holiday Train making a stop in Rousas Point on November 27th, 2017. We're not sure about the time. They're gonna have a show like they have every year, lasts about 30 minutes. We'd like people to bring cash or food donations that go to the local food bank will be at the show. And Canadian Pacific CP Rail also makes a corporate donation when they're here too, to the food bank show. This thing started in 1999, and it's raised $13 million and taken in 4 million pounds of food since it started. So it's a big treat for a lot of people to go up and watch it. So we're, we're delighted that they're making another stopping at Rousas Point. It'll be on 27th to November. And once we get to time, we'll probably put a press release out letting, letting people know what time it will be.
Supposed to be here at 9:00.
Okay. They didn't send it in a letter, that's why I didn't want it. I'd like usually when it comes.
Because I'm supposed to ride the train from Plasberg to Rousas Point, and I gotta be in Plasberg to get on the train at 8:00.
Are you gonna be sent there?
No. I'm, I'm supposed to be receiving the check.
For the food bank?
For the food bank.
Okay, excellent.
But I'm not gonna go. Bob St. John's and Jason Doon, Jason Doon aren't gonna go.
Good. Good. They will, last year, they sent a note asking if anybody wants to ride on that train. All right, so, you know, it's good that we've got community involved, so thank you for that. So it looks like 9:00. Is our best estimate. We have a resolution, believe it or not, it's about the elections in March. I'm sure you have a copy of that. And the reason we're doing this is so we can announce that the absentee ballot applications for this election are gonna be available beginning Mar, or November 20th. And just get ahold of the village clerk, and they'll be able to do that. And as far as nominated positions, for anyone that wishes to run for the positions we're gonna talk about, they will be available after January 2nd, 2018. So the resolution, notice is hereby given at the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point, New York, has on the 6th day of November, 2017, passed a resolution designated the offices to be voted on at the next village election. A copy of the complete resolution is as follows. The next, the offices to be voted on are mayor, two-year term, trustee, two-year term, and the second trustee for two-year terms. We asked if further be resolved, village clerk is hereby directed to publish a resolution in full and the press Republican. So I would like a roll call vote on, well, first, I need a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
Second? All right. Trustee Batha, aye or nay?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Benard?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. So absentee ballots on November 20th, 2017, either by that, and nominated positions. If you wish to run for the office of mayor or trustee, there are two trustees, and one mayor's office open. So step right up and get yourself a petition, January 2nd. Okay. We had a, a very good presence of the Clinton County Sheriff's Department in the village on Halloween, as well as the New York State Police. Several residents commented to me about that, and we had no serious incidents of vandalism or injury of any kind, no fires. It was a quiet, safe Halloween. We are also going to have announced about the annual parade of toys that the Village of Rousas Point sponsors. It's scheduled for Friday, December 1st. Everyone's invited to Rouse Park at 6:45 PM, and then they're gonna parade down the street with Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, the Peg Hucker Memorial gazebo. It's near the village office, they'll sing carols, and the tree will be lit. Children will be treated to hot chocolate and cookies, plus have their chat with Santa. The Doug Memorial and the Friends of Library will be present with Christmas books available for the children. We certainly invite everyone to come and do that, and I'm happy to say the Sheriff's Department is going to take care of traffic control for us during that event. So again, the Sheriff's Department is really stepping up for the things that we used to have our PB do, and I think that's very positive.
Santa and Mrs. Claus will also have one help.
I heard that.
As they did last year.
I heard that. I heard there's something like grants too. I'm not sure what that meant, but...
Happen to know the lady.
That's good. That's good. Yeah, I heard that. Elf, elf was pretty helpful. Okay, also, you got a, I sent you guys an email with the attachment about the leveraging downtown redevelopment, downtown redevelopment initiative, where there are funds available to work on downtown revitalization projects. You can have rehabilitation, reconstruction of residential, commercial, or mixed use structures, facade renovations, street, street state enhancements, demolition of vacant structures. Generally, when, if, if y'all have any inkling about a project that you would like to see, put forth. Mrs. Melissa McManus was, offered her services to, to take care of that for us, so as long as we have a, a firm commitment, if we wanted to dress up the facade of some of the buildings downtown, if we could get the owners to agree to it, or anything else. I also sent you guys a copy of the study of leveraging redevelopment downtown Rousas Point. It's from 2013, but it has a lot of good, good ideas, and so if something comes to mind, I, I suggest that perhaps we could rehabilitate the second floor of the library to make it a community center, but that doesn't fit in with the guidelines of this grant or this, this initiative. So if there's anything else you all are thinking of, I appreciate hearing about it. Before, give, to give Mrs. McManus a little bit of time to put it in, but 17th is a deadline, so if you're, something's burning on your brain, you wanna talk about it, then...
November 17th?
That's what, yeah, that's when it's due to be submitted. Has to be submitted by then. It should be on the first page of your...
So how does it work? I mean, so you have to get the owners to agree on it, to...
Well, generally, if it's an unwilling owner, you would have to, you know, explain to them that really it's not gonna be any cost to them, and it's gonna dress up the side of the building, make it more saleable.
They have to put the money up front. They have to put the money up front, then they get reimbursed.
Comes back.
Really? See them do something to that building outside of Rouse Park?
Well, you know, you know, send an email or, or let's, you know, if you know anything about it.
The rest of the buildings are on Main Street at all, you know, fairly, fairly new and redone. That's probably the only one.
The buildings, yeah, the buildings next to it, that whole block there, that side.
Well, I remember, I was on one of those committees a few years ago. Melissa was having these meetings and calling us all, and all that kind. I don't remember what it was for, but one of the recommendations that they made, the state made, was reducing the number of curb cuts that you have, like where it's carved out for a driveway. They said that helps. And after that, I remember that, and I looked, and there's about three or four downtown that go to driveways that don't go anyplace, like next to Ray's Appliance. There's one there that they made originally because there was a driveway, but now there's a stairway in there. And I think we should get those removed if we can, and then get the sidewalk leveled out, because, you know, they dip down for the, it's a mi, it's a small thing, but I don't know if it would be applicable to this or not.
I didn't send an email to her and ask.
Curb cuts, because they're, the state recommended that we do that.
Right. I know that there's, there's a three-phase application to cut the curb. I, have you ever done any reinstallation of curbs? So, you don't know if they go through the same opposite permit process?
They may.
They may.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's great, I mean, it's a five hundred dollar permit fee, five hundred fifty dollars, right? Five hundred fifty dollars, if you wanna cut the curb like for...
Well, they have to do a traffic study to see if roads, if, uh, if like say a building, like a business, where they want the traffic to come out of the business, where the state wants it to come out of the road. And, uh, and that's what it costs for the study, 'cause they have to have a new chair come up and look, do a site inspection and everything else. But this is just removing ones that are already there, I don't think you'd be into that.
Well, we certainly can, send them an email and see, uh, see what that, that does, and, uh, would, uh, would you like me to have the owners of those buildings approach and see if they were interested in it?
Definitely wouldn't hurt.
You want, you have to carry on with this, you know, it'll probably take a few months, but, you know, if you're all interested in it, I'll have, I'll have...
Just like to see, get seen, the building cleaned up, that would be very...
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if they're offering free money, you need to clean it up.
Well, I think it'd make it more saleable.
Right, well, that's the thing, I mean, if, I know they had it for sale at one point, and nine, but, you know, free money, you know, they gotta put up some money, and then they, you know, just clean up the, at the front of it, and then they...
I'm gonna, uh, send Melissa an email tomorrow. Uh, let's see what she has to say, see if she can contact us.
Yeah, I don't even know if that, that's...
Well, hey, it's an idea, I appreciate it, and, uh, we'll see. You know, I was thinking that, I wanted to, you know, it's gotta be a general board agreement, so that, that this thing doesn't just fall on its face if it gets started, and you gotta keep going, push for it, so. Okay, the last thing I have, uh, you may have heard, there was a minor, uh, fender bender with the tire department pickup backed into somebody again, different driver this time. Uh, the damage was less than a thousand dollars, which are deductible, so, I haven't looked at it yet, has any of you guys looked at it, have you seen it?
No.
Okay, I'm, you know, if it's just a scratch, I don't, if it's not, you know, structurally hurting, if it's not gonna rust out because it's so galloped, have you seen it, Brian?
No, I didn't.
I think we should just maybe try to buff it out and leave it at that. We haven't heard from the other driver yet, right? They did exchange insurance information, and there was a police, all, all procedures were followed. It happened at, uh, Clinton, at Clinton Community College in the parking lot, so, um, so, in case you heard about it, it wasn't a, a big accident, but that's what happened. Okay, trustee Arno.
On the railroad station.
Yes.
I got bolts and, uh, for, uh, ice guards up on the roof, and it come out to two hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And I think the best thing to do is, uh, we'll use some of the cement and also some screws, uh, metal screws to put the, put them on. And we can screw into the copper, the copper thing. But I got to thinking about it after, I was looking at it today, and these are ten foot long. And if I make them, have the village crew put them all up as one piece, we're gonna have a water problem, 'cause they're gonna lay flat, and they're not gonna let the water go over the top.
Can we drill hole in them?
Uh, then we would make a water pocket inside, 'cause it, it, it's hollow inside. So, there would be no place for the water to go, we'd have to go right straight through it or whatever. And I was thinking of taking them, cutting them like in three foot pieces. And stagger them. Put one, put one here, then up a little ways, put one, and down, and up, and down, and up, like that. I think, what do you think?
Mr. Falcone.
Good on you.
In that way...
I've seen them placed like this too, you know, they place them at angles, so it slide off it.
I don't think you have that much of a...
Yeah, there's not much of a pitch on that roof anyway, so, you know?
I think you can stagger them.
I think that probably is it.
So, you think we can do that, Mr. Falcone?
Okay, so if we do that...
I just have to get some... Right, but we'll put the glue down to...
As a sealant.
As a sealant, for the screws to, when we put them into the, into the copper and stuff like that. And the only thing I gotta buy is a, a small box of, uh, uh, metal screws, or sheet, or, uh...
Sheet metal.
Yeah, sheet metal screws, put a head on, and stuff like that to go on there, so, and I don't imagine they're gonna have to expense it.
Maybe the same screws they use for seal roofs, right?
Right, for, yeah, for tinder roofs, yeah. And also, uh...
You purchased those already, right? You purchased them...
Yes, we got them at the village garage, right, Brian, they're over there.
There's the glue and there's the box, but I didn't see any ten-foot strips, did you bring them?
Yeah, they're all over there.
Are they?
Yeah, they're in the, in that back room there, in the supply room on the, sort of outside.
Oh, in the tran- where the transformers are?
Where the transformers are, yeah. So, okay. Uh, and also I, Mr. Mayor took and told me today about the flag pole down here on the memorial, Gallagher Memorial Park, and I went down there and looked at it, and apparently when they put the flag pole in, it was pretty soft. And the pipe that sticks down in the ground is only two foot long, and I think it's gotta be quite a bit longer than that, like four foot or so, anyway.
The slide's about twenty-two degrees, you know?
Yeah, it's...
The wind really, I went out there with, with Jan checking the equipment one day when it was really wailing, you, you see it, it's right there, so...
Yeah, I pushed it over and stuff like that, and you can move it back and forth a good...
It's not cemented, yeah?
It's not a safety thing.
No, it's just, it's just in, in dirt, that's all it is. And not only that, they haven't mowed the grass down there either. Since I put the grass seed on there, they haven't mowed the grass, the grass is just hot.
I've always questioned having a flag pole there anyway. I mean, they got the stone there for the memorial, they got a bench and stuff and some shrubs, but we got, I don't believe in using American flags as decoration, and we've got an official one a hundred and fifty feet away in Veterans Park. We've got the official village flag is at the library, we've got one here tomorrow, it's supposed to be up when we have meetings and elections and things like that, 'cause this is the village meeting room, and there's one in front of the village office.
Yeah, we got my railroad station.
And there's one there now.
Which I took down and down, so, but I don't need it.
I went by, and we had the real high winds, was it yesterday afternoon or the day before?
Day before.
And the gazebo thing has got those American flags decorated, they're all falling apart, they're gone, well, there aren't that, and...
No, no, he took them out today.
I took them all down.
No, I know, but I mean, there was a village employee thirty feet away that didn't bother to notice that and take them down, and personally, I think they should've been taken down after Labor Day anyway.
Right.
But...
The original point about this flag pole?
It is, I don't think it's necessary to have it there in the first place, I mean, when is there a flag there? It isn't all the time, right?
Well, yeah, flags all the time.
They have a light on it.
No, I, I, that makes no sense at all to me, have a flag in the middle back corner of a field that nobody's in all winter long, and...
We just put it back up, it was taken down, so, and maybe it does, I don't know.
That's my feeling, I mean, I, I agree with honoring Amy Gallagher and not, you know, doing anything to upset that part of the idea, but I just don't think it needs an American flag there.
Yeah, but I, I don't think they have any ceremonies down there or nothing like that.
No, if they did, they could do something temporary, you know? But, you know, on an army base, you're only allowed to have one American flag on the entire base. Fork Penning is eighty-eight thousand square acres, and then one flag, that's all that's allowed.
So, are you, you wanna put that in the form of a motion to do something about this, then?
Well, let's rest the board feel.
Well, we'll have a discussion, yeah.
I, I personally think that, that ought to be removed.
You have a...
I just wanna make you aware, I believe that flag pole was donated for that focus down there.
Well, that's good, but, you know, they...
I'm just letting you know, I mean, I understand that.
Thank you for that information, yeah.
Call it perpetual care with it, either.
I think they, you know, I think the discussions were before that there was a flag pole, so somehow it got taken down, and I think you said, you know, I think you said, "Well, why don't we put it back up?" So...
Yeah.
So, we did, I mean, you know, everybody figured that that was the right thing to do, but, you know, trustee Batha has a, a good point, and, uh, you know, it's worth, worth considering if, if, uh, if you wanna do that, are we interested in, in doing what he suggests, removing that flag there?
Well, if, if, if it's coming down anyway and it's not put up correctly, why don't we take it down through the winter and see if we get any comment? And if we get, get any comments, we put it back up, if we don't, we leave it down.
Yeah, it's not being done in any disrespect, the memorial stays the same.
No, and, like, our sense that it's donated, so if somebody, you know, somebody's got information and...
Properties right here, you know, there is one here.
So, you wanna do that, you wanna take it down? Tom, do you think it should come down?
I, if the family donated, I don't think we would have it.
The family didn't donate it, it wasn't, they just wanted, you know, what happened.
Well, one way or the other, we'd have it, if it's fallen over.
We might have some information, Mr. Falcone.
After Veterans Day, I was gonna take the one down at the library, the one at Veterans Park and Amy Gallagher down through the winter, because there's nobody out there, and with the big flag at the library with the high winds, it's a really expensive flag, we usually take them down after Veterans Day, so that's what I was waiting for. Then you get decided in the spring if you wanna put it back up.
Yeah, the flag's gonna come down, you, not much, the way it's put in there, it won't be very hard to pull that out, hold.
Right, well, we're probably, probably gonna straighten the pole off. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that the pole was crooked, I mean, we're gonna be doing a little bit of cement work, we can pour another sonotube out, we're right there, it's totally up to you.
Yeah, that'd be in the spring.
But at least take the flag down, I, you know, I was gonna take the flag down Monday, next Monday morning, after Veterans Day.
All right, why don't you then, why don't we just take the pole down, then for the winter, we're taking the flag down?
Yeah, honestly.
And then, and then, uh, figure out if we're gonna put a sonotube in there and put, put that in there in spring, that makes, that makes sense, bring that up. All right, thank you for that, sir, that's what we're gonna do, there, good job.
Okay, and also, uh, up to the railroad station, apparently Tony picked up the garbage cans on the streets and stuff like that, and...
I told him to pick that one up too.
Yeah, but the people still come out of there, or sit there and wait for the train, and they got coffee cups, and they got this and that and everything, and they throw them on the ground.
Who dumps it?
Huh? The village dumps it.
Do they go, the public works takes care of the trash in the winter, then?
Well, I, I assume they could. Once a week, once a week they could go up there, like on a Friday afternoon and stuff.
Well, they're gonna have to take care of, once a week, of the dog stations, and that's gonna have to be taken care of. You know, the dog way stations, there's four of them in the village, two out here that will be used, little bags, and then there's a little garbage container. They have to be checked, it's gonna be up all winter, so, we'll be okay all winter, though. Yeah, but I'm saying that, the garbage can is good, that, the, the deposits for the garbage bags gotta be cleaned, once, one, checked once a week. So, we just put the, put the garbage can on, if there's, you know, I, I, I knew that the, we all know that the railroad station itself, the bit, the welcome center, isn't getting a lot of use right now, but the train is there.
It's closed.
Train is there every day.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, you live right across from it, if you, if it's a litter issue, let's leave it there, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, but people, people come there, and they have to drink coffee and stuff like that, everything, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad, I'm glad that you pointed it out, 'cause I figured they're all come in, so, that stays there, and we'll have them pick it up.
Okay.
All right, good.
And I hope, uh, they're gonna put the garbage cans inside.
Yeah.
'Cause I see them are in the back of rec center right now, and either bring them up to the sword plant or someplace, 'cause I don't want them blowing all over the place, and, 'cause there's one down in the field down here already.
One of the new ones?
No, it's, it's, uh, one of the rubber made, the gray ones, the rubber made ones, the heavy duty ones. And stuff that's down by the leaguer down there.
Well, they're bringing, they're taking the, the club car up there, so we just have to dig the garbage can at the same time.
When do we take in the, uh, crossing walk signs?
Supposed to be today. It's supposed to be today.
We picked up the one in front of, uh, standing down Lake Street, it was in the middle of the, well, I stopped while I left your house the other day, stopped, got out and put it in front of them, Ben Franklin's there.
They usually leave them up till after Halloween.
He was tipped over and walked across the street.
Okay, good, is that it, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, trustee Dart.
I have nothing, Brian.
Okay, trustee Ben Arne.
Uh, just one thing, I wanted to, uh, thank the sheriff's office for covering Halloween. I went out the day after, and the village looked great, just thanks for their help, that's all I have.
Echo those thoughts, okay, trustee Batha.
Um, just a couple of brief things on the transition of the sheriff's department, or on the topic. I'd like to know, uh, what the status is of the sale of firearms that we sent them to be, uh, sold.
Okay, I asked our administrator to check with the, uh, our clerk will give you the form of contact, and you can, uh, get ahold of him and find out what the status is on that, okay?
Okay, then the next thing was, um, there's some, uh, lockers in the, in the garage bay, um, the first bay, that have, I think, police stuff in them, they're locked, we can't see. We'd like that emptied out and, uh, lockers returned to the village. And the same thing with the, that, they call it an evidence room now, but it's a closet in the back. Like, all that stuff removed out of there, whatever we decide to give to the sheriff, um, and put it, keep everything consolidated in the police station.
Yeah, they, um, as far as I know, they are using that as an evidence room for any, any case, anything they see is here, bicycles, whatever, that's, that's, it's a secured space that they have to have, um...
Yeah, so I, I'd like them to not do that anymore and put it in the police station, they have a secured place in the police station, the old cell that they can't use for prisoners anymore.
Yeah, well, uh, the, the issue that we have with that room is, and we need access to is, because that's where the phone system is located. Phone system goes down, and we can't get in there, they can't repair it.
Where, where's the phone system?
In, where, in, inside the evidence room.
Right, exactly, so they, they don't need to be in there.
We have, uh, well, I don't know if they do, and I don't, I don't know if you do either, I mean, let, let's just find out what they're, what they're doing with it. Um, I've already asked them, it's, you give us a key, I know you sent an email about it, have you heard back from them? We're gonna have to ding that valium, okay? Maybe, maybe, uh, explain to Mr. Peters what's going on, and he can...
Well, you know, if it's really evidence, we can have access to it, that's just the point.
Yeah, I, I understand, you can't do that. I don't, I don't wanna just issue a dictum, "Get out of there," I, I wanna know what, what they're using it for, and if there's anything that, you know, to be worked out, we certainly wanna be, uh, you know, working partnership with it, on this thing with the sheriff service.
I do too, but I think it's important to set the, the boundaries up at the beginning here, and they don't need that room, they, they've got...
How do you know they don't need it?
Because they've got a huge police station that's manned three hours a day.
All right, but let's just...
Lots of rooms and closets and everything else in there.
Okay, we're gonna check it.
I don't know, I think the, uh, historian, 'cause we got some stuff like that big showcase, we could put in there so it doesn't get broken.
Yeah, well, let's wait, I'm just, all I'm saying is, I'd like to ask them what they're using it for. You know, I don't wanna just issue with this get out order, um, they've worked pretty closely with us, and they continue to, they provide us a great service. It's called sheriff services, we give them something, they give us that, uh, we're working together, so, we'll definitely look into that and find out what's going on, so...
Are they putting cameras up or something around the village office, or something, I see some wires sticking out of the police department.
They're, the sheriff's doing something.
Oh.
Yeah, they have to answer?
Hmm, no, that's...
Some things I want to know.
Uh, now, clerk, you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Administrator, I'm not gonna ask you, this is your first day, I'm sure you don't have a lot to report. Do you? You all right? You're, there's nothing you need to...
Sounds like I don't.
There was, okay. Mr. Treasurer?
Just wanna report that I returned over the unpaid taxes to the county today for collection.
Okay.
Much.
And, uh, Mr. Falcone?
Just an update on the water plant project, we started a new system up today, uh, it seemed to be working well. There's some operating procedures that have to be worked out, which all the operators have to be retrained on this system, but, um, I'm hoping by the end of the week, they'll have it all up and running comfortably, where we can start dismantling the other one next Monday. Start taking everything out of the pit. Um, we talked to the engineer today about the skid units, she finalized them, she's supposed to give us her recommendations, where we're gonna buy the three skid units and the dial-up, so we can go forward on the automation. Uh, blacktop tomorrow, we got a day of blacktopping, so we got a few little projects that we're closing up this week before the weather changes.
Good, that's with the county?
No, it's just high work paving up on Smith Street where we fixed a lot of those storm drains.
Okay.
And any potholes here and there. We had, we had one major water leak on Maple Street, if you noticed, a cut on Maple Street between Pine and Champlain Street. There's a ten-inch main that broke, so, we had to repair that.
It's happening more and more, the pipes are getting older.
Ductile iron, there's a stone underneath it. There's no flexibility to it.
Yeah.
Is it feasible to reline those, the big ones like that?
Once you, once they break in so many places, then we put these expansion collars on them, so then they have a little flexibility, so. It's just such a long line of pipe that...
When I worked for the gas company, they had iron, steel pipe for the gas lines, and they relined them with this high-pressure plastic pipe inside and sealed them up, and they were good for another fifty years.
I was gonna ask you that when they were going around like this.
Yeah.
I got one question more, how many times does the water plant go out and test? A day or two days or...
I'll send you, I, I, I wrote it up today, um, and, uh, yeah, let me see if I have it here with me.
I've had all, all the testing required.
How many times a day does it go out?
I'll send you the...
It's everything, yeah, it's everything on there, it's very...
They have to go to, they have, they have to go to several places everywhere, they test at Lily Avenue, they test at the diner, they test at the civic center, um, and they have, there's three sets of testing, mandatory testing they have to do each day, six o'clock in the morning test, uh, it's, uh, and there's a, a lot of other things that come on, but, you know, you, you have that, you have an email on that from quite a while ago, I think that's what Tom's talking, you can take that one out, I'll, I'll send you another one. You want one sent to you?
Yes.
It's, it's a long, long list, but a lot of them, some of them are like once every five years.
Mine is, uh, two, it's, the one I wrote today is nine, nine points, I talked about that, and it's six testing points. So, not all the rest of that stuff, it's not everything they do, just the testing, so I'll send that, I'll send that to all of you. Okay, uh, I recommend to the public, uh, Mr. Public, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Uh, Danny, yes, John Cooper, Pine Street, Rousas Point, uh, you said you referred to the gentleman that our new administrator?
Yeah.
Have you introduced him, so some of the village residents will, uh, know who he is?
I did introduce him as Mr. Steve Peters, our village administrator, yeah.